Seeing that it is 5:30, I welcome you all to this meeting of the school board. If you would join me in the pledge allegiance, please. So we have the distinct honor today of having our girls' varsity soccer team. All of our players. Very exciting. And so a little something I'd like to read. We are so proud to acknowledge our at Penn Girls Soccer Program coached by Angela.
As you can tell, the Chair of the School Board is very proud of you. Okay, it's choked her up. So I will read this for you. Lovely thing that you wrote. "We are so proud to acknowledge our Fall Mountain Girls Soccer Program coached by George," oh my gosh.
Sonas.
Sonas, sorry. Thank you. "As a Platinum Teen Ethics and Sportsmanship Award recipient from the United Soccer Coaches. This national recognition honors teams for consistent and unequivocal exhibition of fair play. Sportsmanlike behavior and alignment with the laws of the game. This honor is bestowed on teams who embody this over multiple years, receiving no red or yellow cards for three seasons. This is not always easy in the competitive world in which we live and play, where many are looking for a competitive and aggressive edge that can result in injury, sometimes season or even career ending. Only 11 teams nationwide receive this level of honor. It comes as no surprise to anyone who has ever been a spectator at one of these games. This group of young women embodies a team spirit that transcends their time on the field, inspiring other teams and coaches who have the privilege of competing against them. We commend and thank you all for being examples of our district's core values: responsibility, respect, citizenship, and integrity. Congratulations."
We've been calling you up one at a time to come and receive this certificate gift and your thanks from the board.
Well, this is probably harder to get than maybe a state championship. I'm not sure though. Here we go. Yes, I can see what's going on. Congratulations. Great job.
Mia.
Oh, she's not here.
Ashlyn Carter.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Skylar. Addison Royce. Mariala. Emma.
Good job.
Yeah, Alessandro. Olivia Alessandro. Suzie. Thank you.
They want to get a picture over here.
This evening, and maybe I can get through this one because this gentleman is not in the room. But we would like to honor Major William Maynard. Each year, the New Hampshire DFW recognizes three exceptional teachers, one each from the elementary, junior high, and high school levels for their outstanding commitment to their students and his curriculum focuses on citizenship education topics. This year, we are proud to announce that Major William Maynard has been honored as the New Hampshire High School Teacher of the Year. The criteria that the applicants were judged by included: Citizenship: To what extent does the teacher encourage and model good citizenship and community involvement? Innovation: How does this teacher utilize new ideas, new tools, new resources, and new approaches in a classroom? Does this teacher's effort reflect an ongoing desire to stimulate the students with new things? Resources: To what degree has this teacher demonstrated an ability to identify and utilize new and exceptional resources to fund, facilitate, and provide materials for his or her classroom? Does this teacher tap into outside agencies, organizations, and individuals to acquire materials and expertise in the classroom? And passion: To what degree does this teacher appear to be passionate about the profession of teaching? Are they regularly seeking to upgrade their skills? Do they try to find ways to encourage their students? Do they take a personal interest in their students' individual success? Unequivocally, yes. So congratulations and thank you, Major Maynard, for bringing all of these to your students and our district. You couldn't be with us today because of other reasons, but we are grateful. So we do have a lot of people here in this room. Is there anybody here who would like to make a public comment before we move on to the rest of the agenda? Seeing none then. I will, in a motion, accept the personnel report.
So moved.
And you can see that we have Jennifer Donovan online, so we will take a roll. Ms. Donovan.
Jenny, yes.
Yes.
Kevin, yes.
Jamie, yes.
Joe, yes.
Alyssa, yes.
Thank you. And the reason most of us are here in this audience, a discussion of our Articles of Agreement. There's been a lot going on in the public regards to this, so I want to go kind of give a little synopsis of how I've seen this since change in 2002 for Articles of Agreement. So what I've seen so far. Within 2002, there's changes for our portion and formula. They were good for quite a while. They served our district. They created a space for Charlestown to build on, just a PS. The only large-scale building this district has had was the formation of the cooperative. The NCCS school was donated. That change was because each individual attendance area became responsible for their own capital expenses. We appreciate that change. Many of those changes, however, made our portion and formula unwieldy and untenable, as we all know. With those changes, we have a lot of technology, a lot of buildings. We have a lot of miles to travel. A lot of that makes it confusing and does not meet our goal, simplifying what we are looking at as a district. Since 2002, there was a proposal in 2015 to change to a 50-50 formula, 50% medium, 50% implied value. I actually don't know where it went. I don't know if it ever made it to the ballot, but I know it's been discussed. In 2018, the town of Charlestown, when Mayor Warren found out that the citizens had a stomach for studying withdrawal. And they did. 2019, they voted to call for a 195-2125 study of the district's ability and suitability for withdrawal. That study happened. Concurrently with that study, there was an Articles of Agreement Committee of the School Board studying what might be good changes. They made some recommendations, and we continue to look at them. That withdrawal study did get presented to the State Board of Education. The State Board of Education passed it on and allowed it to go to the voters. Obviously, it did not pass the voters in March of 2020. And is the world changing so fast at that point? It's probably a good thing not to have to worry about change in the district. However, in 2020, there were other committees looking at changes to the Articles of Agreement. They've been in conversation since then, certainly around this board table. In August of 2024, we all sat here and decided that our goals were to stabilize and simplify this district. One of those things was to look at the Articles of Agreement and make it more appropriate for the world we live in, for the people in our district, for the education we want to provide. In October of 2024, we had a Saturday workshop, sat around this table, had a lot of discussion, and narrowed it down to two working options. Those options were presented to legal counsel. They were vetted through legal counsel. It's both feasible. Whether they're suitable is still up to the people in this room. There was plenty of communication about that. It went, there was a press release to the King's Sentinel, as well as the Eagle Times. It went through Facebook, and it is on our website. Want to read anything about those options that we discussed? In January 2025, it came to all of our attention that there really was another option. We could discuss RSA 195-16A, and that's what we are here to do today. How does this board feel, what do they think about bringing that forward at this time? Obviously, it's not to go on the warrant at this time, but do we want to study it? Do we want to form a committee? Do so.
I would like to study it. I'm thinking more about, I'm looking at Langdon. I'm thinking about Langdon. Langdon's was not part of an SAU. What would that mean? Because if you kept Seraport open, you'd have to have public HR, right? Because you have to somehow get them benefits. Now, we have to get our own HR, because we couldn't, I'm not sure we could back, thinking back on the SAU or pay part-time the SAU, and I'm sure how that would all work. We don't have a, we right now, Seraport has a part-time special educator. If they didn't share a special educator with Alstead, they have to get their own, so another teacher for Alst, for Langdon. You need a business manager. You need ESI, you need OT, you need PT, if that's necessary. You need food service. Right now, that comes from Alst. So you can figure out how, figure out a way how you're going to pay for that and get it all through there. My biggest concern for Langdon is the, we talked about this just a second ago. The special ed, if you had ones, Marla went to this. If you have one special ed kid, one special, what's external placement, out-of-district placement? It's in an order of $500,000.
Depends where they go.
Maybe. I'm looking to say.
That's a little high depending where they go. It's a range.
It's a range. What's kind of, what is kind of the range?
50 to 170.
Oh, so right now, they're going about 80 is my low up to about 180 would be my high for a day placement.
So 80 means about $1.10, our tax rate. 180 means $3 on our tax rate. Because a $500,000 placement, talking like $7. Because every, every.
Can I just add to that, that part of an out-of-district placement for a day placement is transportation? Right. And that, that can sometimes cost almost as much as the placement itself. So, you know, because.
4,000.
Yeah. I'm struggling with that, Marla, right now. Yeah.
So that's why I want to, that's why I would like to study that, to see, what does that mean for Martin Town? There wasn't even other towns too. You start to take those things away. How do you share that? Or are you just really an SAU again? Are you, are you dipping up those costs? What does that mean? How do you do? Seraport does, or Langdon does have another option. They could take the Goshen option and close all their, close their school and tuition their students out, and all of it paid for. That is a business manager, a part-time superintendent, and a part-time special education board. So that's an option for Langdon too. But that would become a part of that study. Look at that, what it means. Lots of questions. So I think we have to spend, it would take us nine months to figure that out. On top of, if these other studies happen, which is going to take all of them, they're.
Looking at it from Acworth's point of view, which is very similar. Being that we're part of the Alst attendance area, we don't have kindergarten, and we don't have fifth, sixth, seventh, or eighth. Say nothing of high school. So, so a town like Charlestown that has a middle school is only, is looking at talking about placing in terms of just generally talking about their kids in general, is talking about placing their, needing to find a place, tuition their high school kids to someplace. But a town like Alst and Langdon are going to need to look to tuition their kindergarten kids and their middle school kids and their high school kids. On top of looking at all of the other things that Kevin has pointed out. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a big, it's a big move. And that's, that's where the, for our little towns, the conglomerate works well because we are able to work together to be able to serve our kids with those things. And, but it, I do think, I really think that it is the right time for us to, as a group, to make a conscious decision, what direction do we want to go? And, and I think it's important for each of the towns to think about it and to make, to make an honest decision. Yeah.
So I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with this study as long as we're not doing any other study. Because if we go into a withdrawal study, or feasibility study is what it's technically called, no one's going to have time to do another whole study. So I agree with Kevin in the sense, I mean, he's just looking at Langdon. Those are a lot of questions for just one school, let alone the impact that 195-16A may have on Charlestown, may have on Acworth, Alst, et cetera. We cannot do that in conjunction with the feasibility study. So I'm absolutely in favor of studying it. I wish we had maybe saw that during the Charlestown withdrawal, because that may have been a nice time at that particular time to move on it, but it's neither here nor there. I definitely think that it gives that little piece that everybody has kind of been asking for. You know, that little piece of what they feel might be autonomy, or what they feel might be local control.
Just to clarify for anybody who might be listening, one thing that we have been talking about, that Articles of Agreement Committee that we met concurrently with the last withdrawal study also recommended that we look at separating our K8s. What this RSA 116A might allow us to do is to change our Articles of Agreement for the number to be raised, that the cooperative is responsible for. So that's why it becomes an option here. Separate the K through eight and make those autonomous to each and create a standard strength. That's really what it comes down to.
It doesn't change what you're talking.
No, it definitely doesn't. That's just how we would have to change there.
Can I? So I know there's been a lot of discussion about a lot of different potential changes that could be discussed. I know there's been a lot of presentations out there that I've not been able to sit in on. I did go to the Acworth presentation. I'm an at-large member. So I went to the, I had the opportunity to go to the Acworth presentation that the town of Wolfhole folks are bringing around to everybody. And so I will be compiling some information to also share, because while I think the information that was shared is good, I think there's another side of the story. You know, somebody that night asked, well, why did we form a cooperative 60 years ago, the year I was born? Many of what you just asked, and many of the issues that Acworth had, and there were two other towns, I believe, at that point in time that were, it was discussed with. Marla was one of them, and I can't remember the other one. West Mulian, okay. And so a lot of the reasons for why they got married in the first place was just that, right? To share in any potential burdens that might come up where where shared resources could be used for the greater good of all. Okay? And so as things have progressed, I mean, it was a long time ago. Things were a lot more simple then. We didn't have a million mandates from the federal government and the states, which drive costs up through your eyeballs. And I could go on for hours, but I won't. It's gotten complicated. And so in 2002, they tried to they tried to make it fair with a very complicated formula that did well for quite some time, right? But now, as we are experiencing growing pains at some of our different locations or want to seek changes in how things are managed or done, that maybe the whole greater good of all doesn't work anymore. We're being not forced, but you know, the board's being, being held their feet to the fire to try to do something ahead of folks just voting and going off random. And so we have been working on this, and we have been talking about this, and Shelley can tell you, we've been talking about it a lot, and she'd really like to see some movement happen. And I don't blame her, because she's been on here for a long time. You know, that being said, there's a lot of different models. And if, if any one of our independent towns thinks that they don't have a load to share when it comes to many of these different independent costs that are scary, like ESL and special ed and all of those things, you know, don't kid yourself. You know? I mean, up where I am, we have $2 million in out-of-district placement costs, okay? It doesn't matter how rich your town is. It doesn't matter how educated your town is. That doesn't matter, okay? Things happen, and you know, children need special help sometimes. And so I think we need to thoughtfully look at the best way to move forward, and it might be for our smaller towns, which was mentioned at one of the meetings. That's why I bring it up here. You know, it might mean for Acworth and Langdon and Alst to look at forming their own little group, right? If, or, or maybe, you know, if one of them wants complete autonomy, they walk, and we let them walk. And then we take the last, the four that are remaining, and we let them bond together, okay? Just if folks want autonomy, if they go, it doesn't mean that the rest of us remaining can't continue to be something that makes sense for whoever's remaining, right? But yeah, I agree that we need to study it, and we need to have something for the warrant next year. In studying it, it means we need some data mining done, you know, and it's going to have to be from our teams. I'd like to see data mining five years back. If the, I'm sure the records are there. Sandra had like an afternoon, right? 10 years back. Where, where are the special ed caseloads? What are the percentages for each town? What is the ESL? Where are those kids residing, right? And without, you know, without very small populations and numbers coming out that we maybe can't share because we have to keep, you know, firm, we have to keep all those kids' information protected, because that's their right. And you don't want to negatively impact them for getting a little bit of help. But that's the kind of information, when we sit up here and we say, we need to look into it, we need to study it. You know, it's not just about who's going to oversee paying my bills, right? And who's going to oversee vetting my new employees? But it's also all of these other pieces that you want to be able to make an informed decision about what do those percentages look like? And I just wanted to spell one other thing, too. You know, property value, yeah, Charlestown's property value poor when it looks at per capita, per kid. And they have the most children, right? But they also get adequacy based on having the most children. So even though this number, you know, here that's represented, they still get different funding from the state, right? So that's their burden to bear. You know, when it comes to special education costs for out-of-district placements, you get reimbursed monies from the state based on a formula. They don't pay us 100%. Haven't done it in 20 years, probably longer. I don't know. Ask me if you know. You get reimbursed. So money's coming back into this. Um, you get reimbursed, so money's coming back into this district. Off of the special ed cost in that method has offsetting revenues, okay? Um, you know, there's all those little fine pieces of details that would go into something of what we have to look into, right? You know, and, and vocational, you get vocational reimbursement aid back for the kids that choose to go over there and we sharing that. Um, so there's a lot of sharing going on, even though maybe we don't think it's as, it is equal as it should be. But um, there's a lot to it. Uh, and I appreciate what everybody's been talking about. Um, it's not easy to break up. Ask some of the other cooperatives that have looked at it and thought about. Um, I just want us to be thoughtful. We've been together a long time and I, and the thought of it. You know, hurts me.
So I do, I just wanna clarify, you know. When I say I wanna study it, I don't necessarily mean. That in a year I'm gonna be pushing something on the warrant if we're not ready to make that decision, right? Right? Because just the questions that Kevin is asking for the town of Langdon. We're not really sure how long those questions are gonna take to be asked, let alone some of the other bigger ones. But I do think that at least making some forward movement to say. What are some, what are some different avenues that we can take? Cause we are looking at one ninety-five sixteen eight tonight. However, Jamie made a good point. We could be looking, we might start digging into this. And right now, Acworth may not wanna do anything, but after they get some more information. There might be an avenue that they didn't even realize existed. So I just wanna make sure, I'm not putting a timeframe on this. I'm certainly not gonna stand up here and say, because it's warrant time, we need to have something next year. But I do think that we need to move forward thoughtfully on at least looking at all the avenues. Because the last thing we want someone to do. Whether it's Charlestown or any of the other towns is to withdraw quickly because they think that's going to solve a problem. And have them be in a world of trouble when they go out on their own. And the four remaining towns are sitting over here because we just spent all this time separating. So. I just wanna make sure that at least Jamie understands, I'm not gonna be sitting here in seven months going, let's go, let's go. We need to do something. I just wanna make sure that we're moving forward and I think that is respectful to the towns. Whether it's Walpole who right now is, is where they're at, or whether it was Charlestown a couple of years ago. Or Langdon, who right now, and, and this board is seeing those numbers go up. I've sat here for the last two years and seen their numbers and I've looked at Kevin and was like. Oh, oh, kinda glad I'm not in Langdon right now. And I don't mean that badly, but we all have those years where the numbers. Sometimes it just doesn't make sense. It makes sense for Jamie, it may make sense to some of the other VAs. But for the person who's paying their taxes and they get that tax increase, they don't always see the lines. I mean, even this year, Charlestown residents are not seeing the lines with the increase that they have felt. And it's, it's gotta be addressed.
Yes. I just wanna, just follow up on your statement. I didn't mean to imply that. I, I just, you know, I know that you've been working on this for a long time. I, I, I do though feel that we do need to make some really good, pretty fast forward progress. Because my fear is that if we don't. It's gonna come whether we like it or not, right? So, so that's my fear. If we don't embrace it and try to move forward with it as quickly as we can, you know. Right? I just, I, I, you know. Yeah, I have fear, I have fear about the what if we don't.
So, I don't wanna wait until the vote in March to start. Um, for, for a couple of reasons. If we waited that long, then, um. We just wait, we got, we got two months or a month out of the way to compete. And I also, this is just, um. I'm not sure that our representative Ms. Teague is going to um, go up again and um.
No pressure, right?
No pressure, but um, in that, in that intervening month, if we could spend a month, just setting a month of creating a project plan, that these are the questions we need to do. Her expertise is invaluable to this board from her perspective. We have a D B A and that's great, but just this, this, this perspective of having a, a. Season B A on the board has been invaluable to us. And so I would, if we did nothing, I would like for us to at least do some project planning and trying to figure out what other questions we need to ask. Um, to go forward and then we can wait maybe till March to figure out whether we're doing. I agree to a hundred percent, we can't do both. And then we table this until we cut through that and just pick back up again in October.
It's too late.
Hundred eighty days is over, October, I believe.
Well, if the study is, if it goes through and that gets done, we may have to wait, see what that results in, but. If it's okay to address the board, we've invited all of our select board members here. And I'd like to give them an opportunity to speak to this as well and hopefully we can all come together and. Make a path forward, like if they're interested in pursuing the things they're currently going on their board. Or if they're interested in seeing how this could work, perhaps delay. Is there a member of any of our select boards you'd like to speak to?
So don't be shy.
Yeah.
I'm not.
So just. Uh, just introduce yourself.
I'm a selectman in Walpole. And I'm not gonna speak to the other select board members, I'll speak to myself only. I've said before publicly that there's gotta be a way for the towns to be able to have some local control. And it, and it stay together, right? I think that's what that one ninety-five C does for us, but I think it's important. Feasibility study is on, I know it's been beyond Walpole now, and I know it's gonna be on other towns I've heard, Langdon. Those votes haven't happened yet, right? And anything can happen at town meeting, or an S B two meeting, anything can happen, voters can change their minds. I've said publicly and I know Alyssa knows this, that I admit to that, I was on the Charlestown Study Committee. I know how much work it takes. Um, and one of the outcomes of that study could be that it's not feasible. Right? That for a town to withdraw and that it's better to form that one ninety-five C. That could be an output of that study committee. You can only have a hundred and eighty days to get it done. If, if any of one of these passes, you have a hundred and eighty days to get your work done. And it's a lot of work. And I agree with that. So, yeah, I think I'm, I'm very much in favor of trying to keep the district together somehow. To give more local control, even if it's for uh, just a bunch of purposes or. How instruction, which question itself, I think has to look that, but. We certainly wanna see students have the best educational outcome that we can possibly give them. I'm in favor of having that discussion. I think not only the board chat that discussion with all the selectmen. Or their representatives should be part of those discussions.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm gonna jump in just to keep it on the same topic, but a little bit different to share, um. I, I'm sorry, I'm Carolyn Mills, I'm also a select person for Walpole. Um, I come from a perspective of thinking. Not that everybody isn't thinking about the students, but the students and the employees and our more recent local experiences. With the school and the numbers of teachers and shifting going on and, um, but so the local control is really. Um, forefront for me through eighth grade. Um, it's, I think it's important for our community. Um, I think it impacts our teams and their ability to do the best work that they can with the children because there are some solid teams. Um, and I think not being sure what's gonna happen in a larger space, given the entire district from year to year. That causes some difficulty for a person not knowing what's happening next. Within the school district, within your job, any of us, if every year you have to revisit where you're gonna be. And that upheaval, I don't think that that's healthy. Um, or number of, of teachers you're, you can have. Um, so I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the recent history about that, of that. Um, outside of the financial piece, our study that we did do based on a vote from the people of Walpole. Early this summer through the two presentations we did within the town hall encompassed more than the numbers. It encompassed um, how it would happen, what put all different towns to working together. I really like this idea of the autonomy for pre-K through A that you're considering. My concern is what I'm hearing is you've already told the conclusion that that's best. When Charlestown went through the withdrawal consideration and it didn't go anywhere and now you're talking about studying it again. And I may have under, misunderstood the history, but what I was hearing you say, it's awesome. It is that that's already been a conclusion and nothing has happened. And so now we're talking about studying for that again. Did I misunderstand that?
I just wanna be clear that the Articles of Agreement Committee that worked concurrently, uh, at the same time, obviously as the withdrawal committee. There were two separate committees. Their conclusion, um, and one of their suggestions. Um, was to look at separating the K to E's, that's all. There has been no decision, there's been no studying of it.
And that's my concern, I guess. That's, that's really the point that I'm making, to whatever degree you went with that, it didn't continue. And so my concern is that if we talk about talking about it again. Where, you know, where there's, you know, and I guess I'm, I'm cautious about hearing that and saying, oh yeah, they're going in the right direction because. You know, it, it's been dropped before and, and I get it, um, select board, it's not an easy job to keep all the balls in the air. I'm not criticizing that, but it's a fact of, you know, trying to do what's right based on our schools and our children.
I just wanna address that one, right? We are here at this table right now because we're not willing to let that ball drop.
Thank you.
I'd like to address that. So, with all due respect, when did that recommendation come out? Two thousand nineteen, the recommendation came out. Then we went into COVID years, okay? And then after the COVID years or since the COVID years, the board has had a few different changes on it for personnel. We've been through three different superintendents, four, okay? And a bunch of other personnel upheavals. So, um. Well, yes, it hasn't moved forward as, as, uh, and oh yes, in between all of that. The general populace voted in a finance committee or a budget committee that actually sets the budget number, not us. Okay? So when all of that was going on, where some of this started about local control. And people, teachers being cut and things having to be moved around. That was a bit of, that came out of the budget committee. That didn't come out of the school board, okay? So, um, there's been a lot of changing dynamics, I guess, is my point. Over a very short period of time, the last two or three years. Um, the school board that year did agree with the budget committee's recommendations for the different. Uh, local school areas in order to bring the total dollar amount of the budget down. Because that's their job to set the dollar amount of the budget. Um, so you know, there's just a lot of dynamics that have happened. Um, and within that, in all fairness, the board did look at the Articles of Agreement recommendation from that study. And, and we made not just one change, but two changes to the Articles of Agreement, which were voted in. And we were in the process of looking at the Articles of Agreement at what we were gonna take on next. And that was probably my frustration this year because the board. The, we weren't able to get there and it wasn't that we dropped any balls, it was. That we had a lot of changes this year and I'm not, certainly not trying to make excuses. Because everybody on this board knows that I was trying to push something in the Articles of Agreement. I wanted something on the warrant this year, anything. I was, I wanted something, but because like, like Jamie said, I knew this was happening. I knew people were getting frustrated. I knew that if we didn't move on something, that somebody else was gonna move on it and. Being on a select board, I, there are times that you have your, your goals and then there are times reality kicks in. And the past year and a half, reality kicked in and we had. Bigger things we had to work on and, and getting a leadership team together and trying to keep everything. Up in the air was our priority. And unfortunately, the Articles this year slipped a little, so.
I just wanted to respond because in no way was I saying you all are not trying or doing your best with all of the pieces. My point is, it hasn't been able to happen. And so we're sitting here and we're watching our schools. And we're not comfortable with our school is what I'm hearing with what teachers are experiencing and then. Some parents are reflecting with changes and so I'm just trying to reflect that. We need to make decisions based on our schools and our kids and the staff in the school.
Understood, thank you.
Dr. Madsen. Um, Deborah Mans, I'm the interim superintendent. I know, I know what you're saying. I hear you with, are you really kind of, let's make sure we do something this time. What I can tell you since arriving last fall, that the board is laser focused on making changes. And I will tell you that it is an every single day conversation at central office. Ideas, what can we do, reading, pulling information. Uh, so, I, I feel again, they are laser focused on it, it's something, something will come of it because of that. Um, the other thing is if, if parents are not happy with something that's going on, there are two really good things to think of. One, they can talk to Justin, who I have highest regard for. He's doing an excellent job. And the second is me, just pick up the phone if you're not happy with. And that has started to happen, which I'm very thankful for. But if parents have questions about how something functions or they're not happy, I would love to hear from them. Because that's how changes are made here from the public that they're not happy. We can at least explain why something has happened or why it's this way. But often take that information and turn it into something that makes a change.
So, so far I agree with everything that's been said, right? I agree that, I agree that there's been lots of obstacles. We all share in COVID and how that affected things. Sharing that the top level of the administration, school superintendent, even the B A has been. I think I have a P A here now that's, that's with us for more than a year, which is good. Okay? And I agree that it's been turmoil. So, so we're here today, right? This is where we are. What would the board like to see happen? What, what would you guys expect to have? Should the towns just back up and say, oh? Don't worry about withdrawal and the school board's gonna take action and go forward with, with something else. Or, you know, what, what do you guys wanna say? How do we get to the end of the topic? Well, I think it's, if it's on you, if you have a warrant or a bill on the, on the ballot. We're in March, so we're gonna see that, how that answers, how that just answered in March, right? So, that's step one to see what happens with March. That's, okay, I still stand by my thing, I don't think we could, I think. Me as a school board member, I really wanna start studying this now, at least putting together a project plan.
Sure.
Deciding how, what, what questions do we need to ask because we have changed here and I want to. She'll be a consultant for us, they're not going to.
That's what I would like to do, I'd like for us to study, I'd like for us to move forward studying this. Separate from the warrant articles that are happening, but with the understanding that if a warrant article happens and asks us to do a. The withdrawal study is not what it's called, um, separation study. Then we will have to step back from our, from that, because there's no way, I'm, I'm not even sure I could stay on the board if the feasibility study comes on. Because of my job, where my job, because I'm not sure I'm gonna have the time to do that for first place. There's like, I need others, much why my heart is to stay on the board and do that too. But there's no way I have enough time to do both of those things and my job, it's really time jobs, so.
I, I, I'd like to see it not be on any of the warrants, the feasibility study. I think there's not a single person in this district that knows. That, that didn't come as a surprise for me. Um, but I also think that you need to hold this board accountable. And if we're gonna sit up here and we're gonna say. This is what we like to do and that's what we're saying to the residents, that's what we're saying to select boards, then we need to have. Prior to March, right, so sort of what Kevin's saying, but I think we need to have a timeline. This is how we plan on proceeding forward. This is how the towns and residents are gonna be able to keep us accountable. As well as making sure that any committee that we have includes. Them, so maybe not as extensive as a feasibility study, right? Committee, because you certainly don't want, if Kevin can't commit to that. Then obviously he's not going to be a member, but whoever can, we need to have members from each. Town. A leader from each town, it doesn't have to be a select board member, it could just be. A leader, a leader person from each town, residents from each town, yes, yeah? If it's not gonna be a select board member, they should choose the representative, but I definitely think we could make it very. Thoughtful timeline that gives us maybe more than a hundred and eighty days to just come up with this very final. Thing, but we have time, but I do think that there needs to be. There needs to be finish lines at each section.
Public hearings and such.
I have a question.
Okay.
I don't have a response, I have a question. So, so, yes. That takes you through to next March to put something on the warrant, right? Well, what if that doesn't pass? So, so here's my question, right? If we could have got something on the warrant this year, I'd had something on. Hey, but I got like, you know, this week, it's too late, I would have just stuck something on there just as a straw poll. But that's my point, like, how do we, once we go through this, we come up with a plan, say by next December, I don't know. I think at that point, we need to have some kind of way to do a straw poll. Before you carry whatever that. Final recommendation is to the warrant, because you have multiple things that you could put on the warrant. There are multiple ways to, I don't, I don't wanna say fix it, because I don't think it's broken, but whatever. Multiple ways that you can restructure it. That is more palatable to other folks, right, or to everybody, or maybe to halves, I don't know, because it only takes half to make it work. So that's my bigger concern is that we go through all of this and we, whoever the we is, comes up with a plan. And says, we think this is the best idea, and you stick it on the warrant and then it fails. I, I think I would like to know, you know, so when we do that plan. I would like to make sure that there's somewhere in there where we hold a, you know, hold a big public hearing in the auditorium and say, listen, here's your chance, man. This is what it looks like and try to get that done, you know, for a December type of meeting so that. If it's not the right idea, you have time to tweak it.
Somebody here have a.
Yeah, Devin Gallagher.
So he got you on the select board, Devin, good for you.
First year, I always voted him, so. I appreciate all the comments and the discussions that you're having now. Uh, it's disappointing because it's, it seems a little late, right? And if we could have had something, you know, more formalized. And a warrant article put on the ballot, you know, at the district vote. That would have been. Plankton's tax rate. Is that nineteen thirty-eight right now? That's the school tax rate. That's, oh, two dollars and twenty-one cents from last year. And five dollars and forty-eight cents from two thousand twenty-four. That's a forty percent, almost a forty percent decrease in our tax rate. We just delivered, um. Our tax bill went out as a rough twenty-seven percent. That is significant. So, um. I appreciate, you know, the study on there, so it, it sounds like one ninety-five sixteen round to study that. Doesn't have to have a formal.
Correct. Well, it would need to have a formal vote, um, of the district, and it would need a two-thirds. Um, it would need to pass.
But not to do the study.
Correct. Um, just from my own, to speak to that. I was heavily involved with what Charlestown went through, not on the committee, but I went to every meeting and saw it through. Did a lot of speaking in my own town. And I, so I saw what people went through and I saw the questions and heard the anguish of people's voices because. That particular wage study doesn't give you all the answers. I personally do not ever wanna bring something to the ballot that I can't answer the questions. And that is what happens with one ninety-five twenty-five. So what I wanna see for if we take this up. And study essentially what one ninety-five colon sixteen. A allows us to do, which is simply to change our article of agreement, I want to have the study and the answers so that we can present them. In public hearings and answer the questions and be able to say, this is what it would look like for us. Not, this is maybe what it'll look like if you say yes, and so you've already jumped in without a safety net. Like you would have to for feasibility study if it goes to the ballot. This, I think, gives us the opportunity to really have the answers and really give answers for the public to vote on and know what they're getting into. That's my own.
Well, it's a wider study, right? So the feasibility study is very. Very boxed in, right? And it doesn't, and you're absolutely right, doesn't answer, it very rarely answers any questions other than. Yeah, we think you, you, you'd be fine going out on your own, now. I, Charlestown forty-six percent. And they found it feasible that we, we could be able to leave. The state in New Hampshire Board of Ed agreed that we could leave even though it would, as they said. Have higher taxes than Charlestown. But there were, one of the reasons why I. Don't believe that passed at the time was the lack of information, right? Everybody had a different information on what financing might be. What, uh, teacher contracts might be, then have a clue about that. What this gives us the opportunity is to maybe narrow some of those things down. So the very specific questions that Kevin is asking. The people that are from Langdon that are on that committee can really zero in on that information.
Exactly.
And. Then we can have another. Section of that committee really zero in on special ed talks, and I'm sure Xandro is like, yay, because. I have time to do all that, but, but again, there's a lot of questions about special ed, right? And what that means and what the ramifications of that, so. Like Jamie had said, you can, you can data mine a little bit on, on some of these questions that. You're never going to data mine during a feasibility study, you have a hundred and eighty days to either say yes or no. That's it.
So how does the towns hold the board accountable? Would you be willing to put it on the agenda every board meeting? Answer where it's going.
Absolutely, and I think in the, in the next month, the first thing that would happen would be, here's our timeline. Of course, with a little wiggle room in there, but to set, here's when we expect to have our first. And our second public hearing, where's we expect to have it, the report ready to go. And then report all the way along the way how we are getting to that place.
I, I think we need to do a step better, I mean, I, I know what you're, I know what you're saying. But I think we need to have it in writing. And, and be able to send it to, to the, to the town boards and put it on our website to say. Here's the, well, number one, we gotta look for committee members, so a letter is gonna have to go out. To the towns, because if we're going to form a committee, we need to figure out. Number one, what that committee is gonna look like, who's gonna be on it, et cetera, et cetera, but. I'd be cautious about putting it on every meeting because we're not always good about that, but I think we could say at least once a month. We'll have a half a meet, you know.
It could simply be committee reports, which is something we have had. Just to get an update, it doesn't have to be a long presentation.
I'd like for us, as we, if we go down this route, right now we have one board meeting a month and one workshop meeting a month. Workshop meeting is not as business related or it should be shortened business. And that, we clear our calendar, whatever things we have planned this year to do in our workshops, and this is the only thing we do in our workshops. I mean, can't you comment? It's just, we just need to focus on this.
Then we have to have a board retreat in the summer. That's what I heard last year, I'm gonna put my feet down.
I think you would agree to a budget. Or a budget retreat, budget committee retreat this summer as well.
I did.
No, it was something we talked about at a budget.
Oh, or.
Meeting, whether that would be an appropriate way to actually bring those two boards together and have a goal. Know where each other stood as to remind you to budget season.
That means more people eating chicken salad.
So anyway. Coming from somebody who sits on and goes to a lot of meetings. Because I'm on the budget committee, that's a lot of meetings. Um, and the meetings here to a month. You know, having another committee is a great idea. But boy, if you're getting on it, you need to commit, okay, because it really sucks. When you're one of four people that shows up. To get things done and then people show up and want to complain about stuff. And they haven't been there, okay, so like, I'm all for it, but we can make a commitment to it. But I don't wanna have people finding. Fault with, you can find fault with the result, okay, if you don't like it, that's fine, don't care, you've got our opinion, okay? But don't find fault with how we got there if you didn't bother to put the work in to get there. Okay, because I'm a, it's a lot of work, this is not a joke. Okay, and there's a lot to this, I mean, there is, you know, there is. Uh, there's a lot to unpack, right? And there's a lot of choices to make. You know, it's not simply. Autonomy K through A, K through four, K through five, or whatever you have, and you snap your fingers and it happens, right? Um, you know, we have, there's a lot, we have shared assets. Okay, that if you're gonna break up, what are you doing with them, that belong to the cooperative, you know, there's a lot here. Um, so it's, it's got to be unpacked and the steps have to go just so in order for it to be unpacked. With the correct information to share to make a good informed decision. And I'm sorry for how long it's taken. So I went to Langdon ten, eleven, twelve years ago to close that school to save money. There we are, so.
So, do you have a pre-written motion for us to create this, to pursue this, or?
I do not, because I have no pre written motion about how this was.
Maybe just do write some motion.
Do we need a motion, do you need a motion to inform a committee?
What do you call it? I made a motion to an add one ninety-five sixteen A study. Could be done at least within the next year with a formal outline of public hearings. Beginning this, Miss D, she's very good at finishing and the. Yes. Committee forming and. Outlines and.
Have a deadline when you wanna. Pause on a timeline to the public.
I think if we're, if, if we're being, if we're being mindful to what Jamie's saying. And we want, and if there are two or three. Or possibly four, five or six different avenues that we could go down. Are you be thinking October, we should. Niche it and then go out and do the roadshow to present all the different avenues? Are you thinking October, Jamie, or is, should it be? September.
Okay, so pause your, pause your. So I think by. By the second meeting in November, we have to have a plan. To share, or maybe two plans to share, right? I don't, I don't know what's gonna come of all the, all the choices, right? But you need to have by November, your second November meeting, you need to be able to sew up what does. What do the options look like that makes sense?
So by Nov- by November and then, and then you.
And all out hearings in December with what the options are and hopefully some kind of. Not a formal vote, but some kind of vote on what we've brought forward to see if it's palatable and makes sense. So, can we back it up before you even get to that?
Can we start with just a timeline, good, right, so.
On when we're gonna share the plans, backing up that. I think that we should try to come up with a plan by, what's the name? Seven, um. Yeah, that's pushing it, um. We should have some kind of rough outline of a plan by the. Second meeting of February, I'd say the first one, but we're gonna be kind of sewed up with, say, February twenty-four. Yeah, we should have an outlined plan with dates. And send a letter maybe before that to the select boards to see who they wanna put on a committee.
To the two in Act one ninety-five sixteen A studies to be done within the next year.
Signing up for. With a clear timeline presented to the public by later than February twenty-four.
Yeah, I think that's. It needs to be doable, yeah.
So. Sorry, oh, two seconds, so we have the twenty-seventh today, then our next meeting is what, the tenth?
Next meeting, yes, deliberative, the regular meeting, the tenth.
We don't think we can sew it up by the tenth.
They, they will come and do an extra meeting?
Sure.
I'm content with quick timelines because I am desperately wanting this to be done. So I am honestly willing to have an additional meeting or sit around the table and. Action this out and put a timeline together, if you'd like to present it on the tenth.
Let's do it on the third. I know there's no meeting on the third. An additional meeting. If we're really serious about it, come together on the third.
If we're really serious about it, come together on the third, we formulate a plan, we can give it to the towns by the tenth. Ish, or at least that week.
But I'm a short timer anyway, you know.
Do we need a hearing that night for petitioned articles, or was that not this, sorry, that must be mine, okay, that's all right, stop.
Oh, that's us, okay. I'm like reading, it's in orange, I should have known oranges. Um, I don't have to be there, right?
I haven't seen any petition articles that have.
Okay, thank you.
So, um.
Well, time and table of motions.
The motion, yeah. For timeline, so we're now missing.
So back up the motion.
Yeah.
Read it again.
To enact one ninety-five sixteen A study to be done within the next year, with a clear timeline presented to the public no later than.
November. The first meeting of December, oh, the timeline, okay, that's, that's February tenth. So we'll have to be here next week.
Yep.
Without serious, without serious.
You better go home and start thinking about a timeline.
Serious boots are coming in. Cause I've not done much research on.
So February eighth one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you like to ask your question?
Yeah. If any of the towns pass a feasibility study, you can abandon this, right? That's one question, and the other question is if this, if you do this committee, do you have any money set aside? For anything you might need, experts, legal advice?
We have our regular legal line. But there is no money set aside for a particular study of this center, this is something that. Will be doing, be able to do against board, with people coming in.
Okay, money's there, how about the first one?
We can't do both, there's no way to, there's no way to do a feasibility study in a hundred and eighty days. And pull off this committee.
I don't know, I wasn't involved in the other, I know, I can see it on your face, I'm sorry, I wasn't involved.
So, the, the one twenty-five, twenty-five committee involves a school board member from our town, and a select board member from every town.
So that means not me, cause I'm not from the town.
Well, the at-large members were not part of that committee, the last. So the at-large member.
No, I like to look at it half full, I'm all five towns.
So.
Maybe you just put one of us on there for all five.
On the one ninety-five twenty-five?
I'm only kidding. Um, no, it's very specific who you have to have on that committee.
So the one, open, study of one sixteen.
Whatever, A.
One ninety-five sixteen A, yeah, could be made up of whoever you choose there or no.
Gotcha, I think Steve did something.
I'm, I was just gonna say that, I think you already said that. The first, if any one of the towns passed feasibility study, you've done, it's one select person each town, and one.
So if any town passes it, it's a select person from every town.
It's anyone.
Yeah. Cause while you're working on the feasibility, what, what you may call the majority report.
Right.
You also have to then study the minority report, which is all the other towns.
And that's if you determine that it's feasible to.
And you all want me to sign up again, right, okay.
Sure.
Thanks for coming, so, thank you.
Thank you.
That, so not sure, but probably not.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Where are we at?
Motion on the table, been seconded. Are we, so are we all in agreement, and Jenny as well? That if any of the towns pass it, this timeline essentially gets put on a back burner table. To see if the town, if that process goes through, and if not, we pick it back up.
So shouldn't we vote on the motion first, or is it gonna make it a part of it?
No, I think it's a motion just to, just to do it, it's only getting us up until the tenth anyway, it's not going to. I think we'll have to have additional motions. Right, we haven't talked about any about how we're gonna make up this committee or any of that kinda stuff, so.
That's what we're doing Monday, right?
Yeah.
My question was purely about whether, something in there about.
Understood, I, I, yeah, I know, well, you could, you could amend it and put another piece in, for people understand that. But, but I'm not, I, bear with me, I'm not sure. That if that other thing passes, that, that somebody. Can't still do some investigation in, on the pieces of data that might, the admin can't do. I'm just saying that there are other. I just don't, I, I really don't think it's fair if. Because some of the same data there, that they would be mining, is gonna be relevant to both.
It certainly will. Uh, but we also know that they are very, very full.
I get that, I, I totally understand, I do. I just don't wanna put a, I don't want to put a. Complete statement in there that definitely killed. It wouldn't kill it, it would put it on hold, the other piece of that is that everybody who's gonna be on that feasibility study. Probably the same people that are gonna sign up for the one ninety-five sixteen A study. Like, there's not enough people in the communities. To satisfy, I think, to satisfy both committees, because the feasibility study is a large population. And I think the one ninety-five sixteen A is probably gonna be a very similar. Dynamic, because you are gonna want leadership roles in there, you're gonna want committee members in there, you're gonna want school board members in there. I'm just not sure there's even enough people to go around. Just to. There's certainly not enough Mistys.
No.
Um, I do think that. I, I think that, that valid points are being brought up in terms of they're not being about spraying ourselves very thin. Um, and I think that there is validity to. If, if the feasibility studies are decided that they're going to go forward, I think that there is validity to some amount of. Continuing to be gathered, if, if we have decided what. Gathered. That the, that, 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 a lot of that data is gonna come from, come out of those feasibility studies, gonna be pulling some of that data, so. And since many of us are gonna be on both one or more feasibility studies. Um, that if we can pull, if we know what data we're looking, we're looking for. Um, then pulling as that data comes forward, and we can be pulling it, pulling it out so that we're. We're just ready to go, and we don't start back at, okay, now, once again, we're gonna, that's my point, we'll pull all this data. You know, so if we can, it doesn't mean that, that the, that the. The group of, of doing the, the, the big study, let's call it the big study and the little studies. So, the group that's gonna do the big study will take information from those little. If, if those little studies are happening, we'll be able to pull information from those little studies as they're going along. Um, I don't wanna see us starting back at the beginning, you know, putting it on hold and then starting back over again. Um, with pulling all that, with re-mining, re-mining that data. You could maybe put the, for formal committee meetings. For that group, if they're the same people on hold, but all the data mining that's happening can still be shared with maybe. One or two of us that are potentially left behind off of it, right? You're not asking anybody to do anything different than they're already doing, just sharing it to the side. So that it can be warehoused with any of the other questions that came up on this side. That make sense?
It does. So the motion on the table. Simply choose have a four, five. Ten.
So what was? Will you read it again?
February tenth, yes.
Did you read that again?
Yep, to enact one ninety-five sixteen A study to be done within the year with a clear timeline presented to the public no later than February tenth. Making no changes to that.
Well, but it says in the body of it that we're gonna complete it within a year. So, to somebody's point over here, that you might wanna have a caveat about the completion within a year piece, right? If any of those other acts warrant articles. If any of the other warrant articles pass, the completion of that may be pushed back.
If we pass this tonight, saying that it's gonna be completed in a year. And then it, then, and we present a timeline. And then at the March vote, if it's decided to do some feasibility studies, could we come back and, and say. We need to look again at our, at our completion and change our completion date at that time.
Do we need to amend the motion to take that?
I don't, I don't think so, I think we just need to make sure that the communities have it in our meeting minutes. That clearly states what we're saying, I don't think we need to amend anything, I just. I think everybody, including ourselves, needs to be very clear, that if we try to do both of these studies at the same time, it's going to thin us out.
It's gonna be COVID all over again, well.
Well, we're, we're so.
Not living through that.
Well, we were so spread out during that time, we couldn't make a single decision.
I'm sorry.
And I, I just like suggest that we change the motion to just say that we're going to get this timeline done by the tenth. Nothing else? So we can.
I'm fine, I'm fine with Joe's motion, I'll second Joe's motion.
Yeah, but I. I'd like, can we take, yeah, I'd take one again, I'd like to try to write one and come back to that while you all move on.
Sorry, if my, Ryan's gonna over. You're forgotten necessarily on behalf of the board, but I would like, you know, I, I respect your time to, to think about how you wanna remove that motion, but. I also am conscious of what Shelley mentioned about keeping you accountable, and I, I would like to see some type of a. Amended motion to keep that timeline and a caveat in there that if. A warrant or a bill passes, one of the towns can mark the table to work until some other time, I, I would like this to that. I would like to see a second motion to bring that.
Okay, so can you, can you? Can you share that with me, where you, what you've got, and let me try to work with it, so we can move forward and come back to it. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from any of the select board members, administrators here, uh, where?
Unfortunately, I would like to point out that our wonderful five towns, we've got all five towns representative of the. School board and four, five towns represented by select people. One town missing, we can all figure out which one. Nobody bothered to show up for my time.
I will say, it must be very, very good, like, hearing on Thursday. In announcement.
I, I would have to, I would have to second that, I listened, I did not, I was, I did not attend, I listened to this very great meeting. Audio was a little rough, Joe.
I can't reach enough for these things. I'm sorry, we just can't, they're like eight thousand bucks a piece.
Eleven, or less than a thousand.
Well, then I need to talk to my select board and chair, who said, I said, I looked for them, they were eight thousand dollars, and now I find out that, oh. Yeah. We'll take care of it.
I hesitate remarkably because the next item is also heavy.
That's all right, we.
Only because I'm conscious of having all of the people here who came for this particular conversation and may not want to stay this, although you should, because it's gonna be fascinating. Hey, with everybody here, how about we take a five-minute recess and people can get a drink or go to the bathroom or whatnot, so just to take our pressure off. I'll be back at the table.
So Alyssa, I reset my motions.
Send your motion?
I do, I resend it or resend it.
Resince every you prefer. Sarah, I believe you have a second on that, if you're okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Okay, Jim's gonna read it, I just. I'll make a motion to study changes pursuant to one ninety-five colon sixteen A. With a clear timeline presented to the public no later than February tenth, twenty twenty-five. In hopes of bringing forward recommendations by December of twenty twenty-five. Should one of the district towns pass a one ninety-five colon twenty-five feasibility study article. The one ninety-five colon sixteen A study will be placed on hold. Second. Thank you, Jamie, thank you, Misty.
Appreciate your patience while we're working on that. Is there any discussion on the motion? Good, Donovan, how do you vote?
Jenny, yes.
With that, I thank you all for taking this big, heavy step, I'm looking forward to it. And I wanna thank all of the select board members who are here, I hope you see that this is something we're working really, really hard at, and I hope you continue to be a part of the conversation.
And we'll be here Monday.
We will be here Monday.
Yeah, feel free to join us.
Thank you for inviting us.
I won't buy you every single one.
We know you all need one more meeting to go on. But it is. All right.
All right.
Our next order of business is our superintendent search. And I know that our HR director's been working really, really hard on figuring out what it looks like, so.
Great, thank you. Um, so, um. Brendan, uh, we have slides coming up, so you have a couple of slides that run through this proposed process, right, this is. Put this together for your consideration, um, trying to anticipate the process that we do, do a couple of things, first of all, leverage the work. That has been done previously in the previous search. Um, a lot of good materials, a lot of good work, a lot of good outcomes from that, that particular effort, that it makes sense to purpose for. For this process, and so that's kind of one of the guiding principles that we're trying to follow. And another is to make sure that we have a process that is, um, that allows for input. And that, at the same time, is inclusive and, and somewhat efficient, because you see a timetable here. You spend a lot of time talking about a timetable, so, putting all this together will be a challenge, so, um. To go back, uh, Devin pointed out a message a couple of weeks ago, uh, to the community. Uh, to announce the ST search, um, about the launch of the search, we told the position, uh, last Wednesday. Uh, to, um, the format website and a number of other, um, recruitment websites, um. So that's out there, it's been out there, uh, we used a job description that was developed as a function of the work that was done. Prior, um, search, during the prior search. Um, so we had, we have not received any applicants to date. but we're ready. Um, and so the, the way that we would approach this is once those applications are received, um, I would spend time prioritizing them, uh, based on the initial, um, uh, screening criteria that again come directly from the job description um, that was posted and was prepared, um, a year, a year and a half or so, two years ago. So I'm not gonna read those. You can hopefully see what those qualifications are. The application requirements are a letter of interest, a resume, three current references, verification of degrees and certifications, and a stated philosophy addressing, um, three areas, education, management, and leadership. So, um, that is, uh, proceeding. Again, the posting is, um, the job posting will be up and the search open until the end of February. Hopefully this candidate, so that we can start evaluating. We are, um, we have superintendent search subcommittee of this board, um, who I will be working with to develop a rubric um, that takes into account the job description and te- and develops a, a four-point scale that we will use to, um, rate the degree to which candidates, um, meet the expectations that are outlined in the job description. So, so another, another guiding principle is to try to make this obviously qualitative, let's add a quantitative aspect to it. I'll talk about that rubric, rubric again, is wanna introduce it um, and work with the, um, with the, the search subcommittee, um, to make sure that they're comfortable with it, because they'll be using it, um, as part of their. Um, you could go to the next slide, please. Thank you, Brendan. Um, so hopefully I'll have an update, um, for the board, uh, the February tenth meeting. Um, we will, if, I'm hoping to get a top, this is the top three to five candidates. I'm hoping that's what happens. But those applications would then be provided to the subcommittee for their, using the rubric that, that we will develop together. So that we're hoping that that come, that happens on or around the nineteenth of, of February. So that candidate, uh, the subcommittee would then review the candidates and select, select them to two or three final candidates for full board interviews that hopefully will take place, uh, the week of March. So these will be initial interviews with a couple of candidates. Um, again, using the rubric, um, to evaluate those candidates, so the subcommittee will have used the rubric, will have data. Board in their interviews will use the same rubric, will have data from those interviews. Those interviews, uh, will be kept confidential and remain confidential until we have final candidates. Um, so that happens, uh, we will hopefully the week of the third. And so the board will then decide on, on two final, um, candidates, two or three final candidates for the next round of interviews that will happen mid-March. Uh, and our thought, thoughts are that we will have a two-day process. The first day would be a meeting of what we're calling the candidate advisory and assessment team, and you can see, can you scroll, um, a little bit more? There you go. Um, you can see, um, so this is a representative group, um, that we want to put together, that would include district administrators, current and newly elected board members, a budget committee member, parent, and teacher representatives from each attendance area, a select board member from each town, and a teachers' union and support staff, um, union representative. Um, so the idea would be that that team would interview the final candidates on a one or two-day, uh, round of interviews. Uh, one candidate at a time, same set of questions, very consistent. Uh, um, timed very strictly to make sure that we get the ten questions that we wanna, wanna answer, want the candidates to answer. We will have seeded that, those questions to members of that group, you know, prior to those interviews. So it's one interview followed by another interview, followed by a third. You get all of that done day one. Day two is the day in the district where the candidates will have the opportunity to go around visit schools, talk to teachers, talk to, um, staff, and then that would probably, um, meet the candidates event that would happen later that evening. So that's the idea. We would hopefully be able to coordinate and pull that together and have, uh, final candidate selection by the end of March. So that's what we have in mind. Yes.
Sorry, I know I missed a meeting somewhere along the line. Cause I was sick. Um, so great, we got Ed Jobs in the LinkedIn School Spring, um. What about Ed Week District Administration, NASDAQ?
Yeah, so we're, we're looking into doing all of that and expanding certain those sites, I think.
Yeah, it's like, probably like a grant fifteen hundred, but it has really far reach. Um, those are some of the places that we had utilized.
Good. Thank you.
And you had. NHSBA, and we have a school association.
Here's another one that comes out of a month. Send it a link.
Yes.
So in some of our initial conversations about this timeline, we talked about the, uh, interviews with the board, the a composition of the whole board and the new board. And so if we didn't, if we had the full interviews on the week of March third, we wouldn't have that.
Part of that secondary process. They are part of the secondary process, um, in order to get along. And so it's only being narrowed down by the four, the first step. The full, all to the whole. With all of the state members, so that they can bring in their perspectives, why they don't have the board, but their vision for the district is that, I think.
And I did mention this, but the idea would be for that committee or group or team, whatever we call it, to use the same rubric. So you're getting three different sets of data around the interview process that's going on for, for the candidates. In addition to all the candidates. So that's the plan.
Are there any other questions?
It seems like we're in a, in a hurry. Yep. Seems like we're in a hurry.
Oh, what do you mean, Shelley?
It's a compressor. It, it's very compressed. I was, I, for a minute, I swore that said twenty twenty-six on my email. I wanna wait. So I've had, had some feedback from some folks that were, um, first afraid that maybe we're starting too late, and I have assured them that we're, we're in season. Um, I belong to several, um, organizations and the postings have just started to come out. So this is a good time. Any earlier than that, usually, especially sitting superintendents won't apply because they still have work to do with their boards. Uh, and just, uh, for people listening from the outside, one of the reasons that you have, um, that you, you keep the names of the people who've applied, what's the word? Confidential. There we go. See, that's why, that's why I came. Yeah. You keep them confidential because again, people are working with their school boards, and most times superintendents only tell their school boards if, that they have applied once they become a finalist. So there, um, there are reasons that things are done to honor, especially to honor sitting superintendents. Assistant superintendents or other folks, usually it doesn't have the same, uh, the same idea behind it, because boards know that people are going to.
Questions, comments?
Pretty tense, gentle, but have we, are we using a similar process to look for, replace our director of curriculum and instruction, or have we, we haven't had that conversation at all? Have that position before we do. If we've not posted that position yet. Okay. That should be in our next, my future agenda to get, to decide what we're gonna do with that position.
We were looking for those, and all of the job descriptions and such to see assistant superintendent have that discussion, so that would be. Are there any questions from anybody here about this process? All right, seeing none. The evaluation. Oh.
Sure. So one of the important pieces of what Bill is doing is he has taken this job description that was part of, of the product that the firm wrote for you. So that is, that really is a very pivotal document, meaning that questions need to be written from it. What were the other ones? My train went by. The rubrics, all of it needs to be written. So the one additional step the board may want to take is to have the evaluation piece written at the same time. That would be directly linked to the job description. So I've talked to Alyssa, because I've done this before, and created superintendent evaluation pieces. What I would need, if you want, if you want me to do this, wouldn't have me to do it, but I need about forty-five minutes or an hour of your time individually. And thi- this is the question that I'll ask you. For example, in HR, if you had an outstanding superintendent, what kinds of things would that person do for, in human resources? And I just ask you, we'll just have a conversation, I'll write down some ideas. I will put them in a rubric, and then when I finish with everything, I'll come back to you. The product would be then a fully aligned evaluation piece. So when you start with a new superintendent, the superintendent should receive the evaluation piece and know exactly how he or she will be evaluated by the board. And the board understands exactly what their expectations are for the superintendent. So if you would like me to do that, I'm more than willing. I'm up. I'm more, more than willing. Anything over a half an hour and require chicken salad. Unless, unless we're, unless we're on the phone, then. I'll, I'll do my best.
Have it delivered or door dash.
I'll do my best. No, I like that idea, cause I think our review process has been really sketchy for the last.
That's one of the things we have.
Unorganized. Maybe not sketchy, it's unorganized. So.
I'm in favor of that, too. I would like a copy. I haven't, I didn't get to see the outcome of the, um, our consulting firm with our last search. I'd like to see a copy of the thing that you're using to grade the rubber.
Oh, this is superintendent.
Job, whatever that's called, that's a job.
We can send that out.
Is that, is that fully the output from that?
Yes. All right, so essentially it's probable. Are we good moving forward with that?
Yes.
Please. Jenny's on it as well. Yes. All right, the only business remaining is non-public. So. So we have a motion.
I move to go to non-public for see.
Website. Again, thank you all for coming.
We'll be in touch to recruit y'all.